Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, October 7th, 2019. And please rise for a prayer by Heidi Coolman of Blessings Big and Small.
Almighty God, thank you for being together with us tonight. Please be with the leaders of our city as they discuss and process the various issues that they have at hand. Please help them have patience, help them have deliverance, and help those who express their ideas do so in the manner that you would have them do. We so appreciate you being here with us, and we really appreciate your leadership and your blessing and your praising, and that we might glorify, praise, and honor you with our presence this evening. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pete, did we get call-ins? No, we did. Roll call, please. Albertson.
Here.
Bueller. Absent. Hoyer.
Present.
Hollein. Lalum. Manti. Rademski.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Vilhauer.
Here.
Y.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Manti and a second by Hollein. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, and I apologize because I was not able to attend this part of it. I assume items K through Q are coming with recrimination from the committee meeting?
That is true. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is the public comment period, and this is the time reserved for people to talk about things that aren't on the agenda that they'd like to speak about. If that's the case, please approach the microphone. See no one, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. So moved. A motion by Lalum and a second by Rademski. Is there any discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is a fun item to do. I'm going to make a very special presentation, and I need the other microphone for that, The city of Watertown has a very talented employee who was just recognized for being the outstanding new librarian in the South Dakota Library Association. So Jamie Formanek, will you please come forward? And she is a dream employee, and we're very happy to have her, and we hope she's in her dream job. So congratulations very much. Item number five is presentation and acceptance of the 2018 audit from William Neal and Company, PC. And I believe Troy Heeb is here to make that presentation, and we need to formally accept it, so. Have a motion by Lalum and a second by Hollein. And Troy is from William Neal and Company.
Thanks. First I'd like to go through, it's the summary of the auditor's plan results. The first part is deals with the audit of the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for each opinion unit, which meant it was a clean opinion, there was nothing that was noted. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were disclosed, and we did not disclose any non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. The second part is our compliance audit of the major programs, which were the Community Development Block Grant and the Airport Improvement Program. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were disclosed. We also issued an unmodified opinion, and there were no audit findings that were required to be disclosed under the uniform guidance. Part B, there were no written current audit findings, and also there were no other current The next one is the letter that Kristin had sent out to each of you. The first thing I'd like to talk about just a little bit is, under the Significant Audit Matters, it's the first paragraph there, it talks about GASB number 75, which is a new GASB that was implemented during the year. This is a change in the reporting, accounting and reporting, financial reporting of the post-employment benefits other than pensions, which would be the health insurance benefits that you provide to your retirees. Due to the implementation of this GASB statement, there's a significant increase in your liability of approximately $700,000. And the numbers come from our actuary, we get an actual person that determines the amount, and that's what we adjusted to. So, okay. Next, the correct and uncorrected misstatements, which is right from the bottom there, up a couple paragraphs. Professional standards require that we accumulate all known and likely identified misstatements identified during our audit, which are, we consider, that aren't considered trivial, which are smaller ones, and what we do is we communicate them to appropriate level of management. We accumulate them on audit difference evaluation forms, and if they become material, then we're required to adjust them. So the attachments you had to your letter, this letter here, were ones that we identified that were immaterial, but we did not adjust. I wasn't going to go through those unless someone has questions on them. There were a couple things that we did adjust that were material to the financial statements, and those are the last two paragraphs there. The first one deals with the Cumulative Reserve Fund at the South Dakota Public Assure Alliance. What they did is they changed how they calculate the amount available. If you would withdraw from the pool, you would get money back, which is probably your premium that you've paid in the past. And due to this, there was an increase of about $475,000 as an asset on your book. So this was an adjustment we had to make, kind of after the fact, after everything had been done. We had, we were at a conference, and they talked about that, they realized that this had not been changed, and no one really knew about it, so after we came back, we had to make an adjustment for this. And we recorded as an extraordinary item on the financial statement, instead of reducing the insurance expense, which would have given us negative expenses, which wouldn't have looked the best on the financial statement, so we showed it as an extraordinary item. The last one is just, what happened is, it was recorded as deferred revenue. Anything received during our period of availability should be recorded as revenue. And when this was set up, it was recorded as deferred revenue, but it had actually been received within the 30 days that we consider our period of availability, should have been recorded as revenue. So it's just rather a reclassification from deferred revenue to actual revenue account in the financial statement. So it did increase your income statement about $270,000, so. Last, I guess, I'd just like, just one more thing, would be on the second page, would be other audit findings. I just mentioned again that there were no audit findings or issues that we found significant and included in our schedule of current, which is really the thing I talked, the schedule I talked to first about, I'm just making reference to that. And then there were some other things that we had noted that we discussed with the Finance Department or our utility, whichever one it was applicable to. It has been approved by the department's legislative audit, so it's been approved, and we have submitted to the government, GFOA, so that's all been done. Are there any questions regarding?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Councilman Vilhauer?
Yes, Troy, a couple things. You want to tell the audience what GASB stands for?
Okay, Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay, thank you. And just to reiterate, I think you alluded to it, but this does include the Utility Department as well as part of your audit.
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then just a final comment, just I'd like to commend Kristin and her staff, and Adam Carson, his staff, the utilities, for the results, and I know what goes into this, and to get the kind of report that we're getting says a lot to the people that we've got working for the city.
Very true. Good reports all around.
If there's no other, yeah, if there's no other questions, I'd just like to thank Kristin and the Finance Department for everything, all the help they've given and stuff through the last couple months, so. Yep, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is application for a special event retail malt beverage and wine license to Lake Area Technical Institute Foundation from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM on Friday, November 22nd, 2019, for the 2019 Festival of Trees event. And I'll get a motion for approval. I have a motion by Y and a second by Manti. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I see LATI is here. Will you please introduce yourselves and give us a brief rundown?
I'm Tracy Levadchik, I'm the Director of the Lake Area Tech Foundation.
And I'm Morgan Johnson with the Lake Area Tech Foundation.
And this will be our 20th anniversary Festival of Trees this year, and last year the council was so kind to allow us to have beverages on campus for that one event, and it went off without any hitches. We have additional liquor liability license that covers both Lake Area Tech and the Watertown School District, as well as special event licensures to take care of everything. And again, with this year, we will not be having anyone attend the event that is under the age of 21, so there should be no issues, again, if granted this acceptance.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? If so, please come forward. See no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilman Hollein?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, drive up those bids.
Councilman Lalum?
Ladies, where will this be held at? Which portion of Lake Area?
On the Student Center, so it's on essentially Level 3 and Level 4 of the Student Center.
And this will be after hours?
After hours, yep. The event starts at 5:30, and it will wrap up by 11:00.
With no students around at that time, I'd take it?
No, none that are underage.
Okay.
And then the actual, the entire school is closed down in that area for that day, anyway.
Any other questions or comments, council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Roby?
I'll have to recuse myself from this item. I also want to mention that I'm currently on the road, I'm going to probably be around for the next few items, and I'll probably be dropping at that point, so I'll make you aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is authorization for the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding for fire protection and ambulance service for the townships of Dexter, Eden, Elmira, Fuller, Graceland, Henry, Compeska, Cransburg, Lake, Pelican, Phipps, Rawville, Richland, Sheridan, and the villages of Henry, Florence, Cransburg, and Wallace. Motion by Hollein, second by Albertson, and, let's see, Don Rowland, you're here to, our Assistant Fire Chief, here to tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, members of council, we are here tonight to authorize the mayor to sign a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with those 14 townships and four town villages that we provide EMS or ambulance protection for. We've been doing this for a number of years, very similar to our fire protection services that we provide to nine townships that we provide service for, we also charge those folks as well. Currently, we run around 200-plus ambulance calls outside the city limits, roughly, you know, 7% of our 2,700 ambulance calls we run each year. And essentially, the monies, the funds that we're going to be receiving from this, we want to use it towards our capital outlay issues that we have with our ambulance. It roughly costs us around $100,000 every two years to outfit a new ambulance. So the funds that we receive here, the revenue, about $17,000, is not a real great amount of funds, but it will help off some of those funds for those expenditures. So with that, I'd entertain any questions regarding the MOU.
Any questions, council?
Don?
Yes.
Have these fees been changed or reviewed recently, or are these pretty well standard from period to period?
These are actually new fees, these are ambulance protection fees. This is something new for the city of Watertown.
Oh, okay, okay, got it, thank you.
We base these fees on population per township.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, item number eight is approval of the revised urban renewal plan. I'll put that up on the screen. And we did have a hearing, the second meeting of August, and we postponed the vote on the urban renewal assessment because there was some criticism that the plan should be updated, and there were some other things that people were unsure about, and basically that people wanting to be specific about what the money would be spent upon. So if this revised urban renewal plan is not adopted tonight, the existing urban renewal plan will stay in force. And the changes are up at the top, in accordance with the South Dakota law. That paragraph has been revised a little bit to update it, to be accurate with the current rules, and then most of it stayed the same. Item number three was public areas, beautify with a park-like setting. We could build a park with that item, but we felt that we could be a little bit more explicit, and actually write in, construct a city park with public gathering space for all seasons. And I should say and clarify who did the revision. This revision was revised, this was done by a committee made up of three council members, the two from Ward C, which includes the Urban Renewal District, plus Councilwoman Vilhauer, and staff members. Keith, were you in that? Heath was in it. Matt, Kristin, were you not? Matt was, all right. Okay. And I was in this, and as well as the Watertown Development Company Director, Chris Shilkin. So we revised the plan to explicitly state that a city park could be there with gathering space for all seasons. We reduced the assessment rate down. The previous one said 1/2 of 1% or .5. I think we were actually charging people .375, and we reduced it even further down to .2%. And then, this is no expiration date, so it can be canceled at any time, otherwise it'll go on in continuance. What this plan does is, it spells out what the money can be spent for, but this does not do the assessment. There still has to be an assessment resolution, which will be passed or not later, but this is just the revised plan. This was taken to the Watertown Plan Commission, who reviewed it and recommended it for approval by the city council unanimously. And so with that, I will ask for any, see if there are any questions, and actually, I don't have a motion yet, do I? I have a motion by Lalum and a second by Manti. And now, does anybody have any questions or comments about this revised plan? Councilman Lalum?
So just to clarify, this is just the revised portion of the plan.
This is just the plan, this is not the assessment.
Sure.
So if we don't do an assessment, we can adopt this plan, or we can not adopt this plan. If we don't adopt this one, we have the old one, which is a higher assessment rate. If we do adopt it, but then we don't do the assessment, it will just lay there until we would do an assessment someday in the future, if ever. So, other questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Hollein?
Just to make clear to everyone, this is not the actual money or tax. This is just to change the plan if that were to happen, so that we could do a park and things like that.
Right. In order to do an assessment, we have to have a plan. So we had a plan, was written in 1981, people thought it needed to be updated, so that's been done, and that's what you see. Seen any other questions? So I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number nine is the actual Urban Renewal District Assessment Rule, Resolution Number 19-42. Have a motion by Lalum and a second by Hoyer. And we do have a public hearing on this, and we'll get to that in a moment, but I would like to describe how this resolution has changed from the one that was on the agenda in August. There were several changes added to this. We did exclude vacant land, I think that's on there. And so that might need to be changed on the assessment rule, or that can be removed. The 0.002 times the assessed value, that reflects the .2%. And the wording was changed to say, implement constructing a park, to actually design and build the park, and instead of the vague wording of move forward to construct a park, we changed that to say, award a contract by December 31st of 2021. And if we have not awarded a contract to construct the park by that date, then the money will be refunded to those who have contributed it. So what this resolution does is it spells out very specifically, we can't spend this money on anything but that park. And we do have, if you could move forward to the illustration of the park, we have some renderings of what the park would look like, and, oh, they didn't get in the agenda packet?
Actually before.
Oh, it's before. There it is. Okay. This is not a formal design, this is a rendition of what a park could look like and what we would anticipate. We did do a cost estimate, a rough cost estimate, to do this, which would include a bandshell, which is a raised stage with a covering over it to protect out of the weather, a grassy area during the summer, no mow grass, is, you know, astroturf. And during the summer, during the winter, it would be an ice skating rink, and also a splash pad, which we've looked at putting into our park, a park somewhere in Watertown, and we thought we'd do it downtown here. It shows this space in the empty parking lot, which is adjacent to the Watertown Community Foundation, and right near the senior center, which the city already owns, and we feel that we could get some help with that, having bathrooms in it, so we wouldn't have to construct more bathrooms, there would be some utilization there. And this would, we think, be a giant improvement to our downtown. It's something that our community has stated that they would like to see done. We believe the cost of this would be about $2 million, and the assessment would go toward it, but the assessment would be collecting like $30,000-some thousand a year, less than $40,000 a year, to put toward this park. And there would be donors also putting money toward the park, and general city taxes. So the taxes would be utilized for our whole community, because it benefits the whole community, but also the Urban Renewal District benefits the most, and so it's felt that that would be a okay use for that money, and that the district would support being taxed for this purpose, because it would enhance their property values. And now, there are people that have approached me on both sides of this issue. I know people support it, and I know people are resistant to it, and the city did receive a list of names of people who oppose it, and I asked the Finance Department to calculate up how many distinct properties that represents, and what amount of the assessment that that represents. And I believe the totals were, 55 properties were represented. There were more names than 55, but some of the individual properties had two signatures for the same property, out of 145, and $13,436 out of $39,853. And those amounts might change a little bit, but that was our best estimate of what that reflects. So I am going to open the public hearing at this time, and since we do have such a long agenda, I am going to limit the public hearing time to 20 minutes. And I also would like to state that because there are people who feel strongly on both sides of this issue, I am urging all speakers to be respectful of the positions that are different from your own. If I hear cheering, booing, or clapping, I plan to close the public hearing immediately. So please, be respectful of the other folks in the room, we know they're people on both sides of the issue, and we'll get through this just as quickly as we can. I have my phone on a timer for 20 minutes, and so if you're speaking and you hear that ring go off, you can, I'll turn it off and just finish your thought, but we won't be taking any more. So give everyone a fair chance to talk. We'll go back and forth. I'll ask for someone who favors it, then we'll hear from someone who doesn't. And because there's only 20 minutes, I urge you not to repeat what has already been stated. So with that, the public hearing is now open, and I would ask someone who is in favor of this to step forward, state your name into the microphone, and briefly state your position.
Good evening. Julie Knitson from the Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau. I just want to just go over a few of the facts that I know about when Rapid City built a downtown square. I don't have exactly, it was in 2011 that it was opened, but it's a year-round attraction for not only locals but visitors as well. And I know that they have there, it's a bigger market, but they have 200 events a year, and I think that perhaps there's some people that maybe are looking at this as just a park that, you know, people are going to take their kids to, and the locals, but I think that we need to throw in there the asset to the visitor industry as well. This will give people a reason to come downtown. Right now, we've got Thursday Night Live, we've got Ventiges, it's one weekend a year. This gives us the ability to do events, it gives us, the city the ability to actually do some leasing of the property to, for upkeep and things like that, if they wish, for private events. I think that there is just a lot of things that this can be used for that people aren't thinking about vendors and things like that. So I think also that, you know, a $2 million price tag for what basically, in my eyes, is a venue- eyes, is a venue, an outdoor venue, it could be a skating rink, there could be, I mean, I can't even begin to list the number of things that can happen there. Tourism brings in a lot of money to Watertown already, but if we can keep them an extra day, or have events going on down there to give them something else to do, that just turns it into a bigger, bigger thing. I just came from a conference where we got an RFP for six hundred room nights, and they wanted to know what there is to do for those people, those six nights a week. If we had a downtown park and had events going on every day, that would be a slam dunk. So we're getting that extra penny from the tourism tax, and just, a lot of people don't realize how that all works, but the tourism tax in Watertown reduces every, every household's taxes by three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and statewide by nine hundred and ninety-four dollars a year. So there is revenue that will come back into everybody's pocket and into the general fund and into the third penny fund. And it's proven, and Rapid City is a great model to look at, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the urban renewal assessment resolution?
Mike Landsberger. Did all the council members get a copy of that new petition that, that was sent out? Lot of us feel it's not a fair tax, and it's not an equal tax with the, with the people downtown. And you mentioned there was fifty-five separate properties that was listed on that petition, you know. I might have, there might have been a few more, but some of these people, people have two, three buildings, you know, which would show up. But for the council to pass this with that many downtown property owners paying that tax, and if they are against it, and the, and the council says, no, we don't really, you know, we're not respecting your judgment on this, which is kind of almost a slap in the face to us that, that our opinion isn't even respected. And, and these are all, most, all of them are small businessmen. These are the backbone, the backbone of downtown. These are the people that make it work, for better, for worse, they all try their best. But all of us have plenty of things we can spend our money on. The last thing we have, wanna do is have City Hall crunch numbers and tell us what we should pay, when we could do that on our own. It's, it's not a, you're almost like hurting the people you're trying to help. It's, you know, it's not good. You can come up with a lot of good, wrong reasons, but the fact remains that all those folks signed the petition saying they're opposed to it. And there's a few people that didn't sign it, and you got a spectrum of like four or five, but you got all, there's certain different reasons why they like it, or they didn't care either way. But I think you gotta respect the, the property owners downtown who are gonna have to pay for this. The whole town's gonna enjoy it, but why it's being penalized on us? It's, it's not a, you know, they all, they already have a tough enough time making it. And, you know, even the word urban renewal is, is really a terrible name. It's almost sounds like it's a downtown Detroit plighted. We're not that. We are, you know, it's a vibrant town, and everybody tries their best, but to have somebody else tell them what they should pay is wrong, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor of the urban renewal assessment?
Jeff Gamber, County Fair. We're, we're in favor of that assessment. We've had that in the past and years ago, and it's always done a real good, we've, we've had real good success throughout the years, myself was on the board and so was Annette. But this is a, a great opportunity for us to advance forward and, and help, help us move Watertown forward, help us move our uptown forward, and I think I really need something like this.
Thank you. Anyone opposed to the resolution?
I'm Dorothy Harms, and my husband's gonna pass out the map of what you sent us. And the reason why I want you to look at that is because I went around and looked at all the bars that are in the area. In the downtown area, there is eighteen locations that sell alcohol, and within two blocks of that area, there's five more. That's five, twenty-three locations that sell alcohol, and you wanna put a park in the center? It just doesn't seem right. So then I went on the website for the city parks, and I never realized there was forty-one park and recreational areas in Watertown. And within the forty-one, there is four parks that is very close to downtown. So I'm just wondering, why wouldn't you put this park in, or this development in one of those parks? It just, to me, it wouldn't make sense. And again, I agree about, why are you penalizing the downtown people? The downtown people are just here to work too. What if you include everybody in the city that will probably enjoy a park like this, but put it in a park that is near here? You don't have to put a brand-new park in, especially when we have forty-one wrecking park areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor of the resolution that would like to speak?
Hi, I am Jacey Stauffen-Ruschink, I own Coca and Finn, and I am now a actual, secure, stable, staying downtown member, business owner downtown. I completely understand where a lot of other business owners downtown are coming from. Times can be really tough, we don't have huge margins, we're all trying to make it, we're trying to make our businesses better, and on our own terms and with the revenue we have coming in, and I, I get that it doesn't always feel like you have a lot of extra at the end of the day. We're in the same boat. I completely empathize and echo all those sentiments. However, as somebody who has studied entrepreneurial ownership and all those things that go into it for a long time, my feeling is that, especially with the age of, where there's other places you can go and you can travel, and, and there are so many online options, especially for retail to go, our best bet is to make it as great an experience that people can enjoy where you're shopping, where you're spending your money. Experience is everything right now, and I know that the customer service that Watertown offers is awesome. I can look back at so many members behind me, and I know that for a fact that they offer awesome customer service, but at the end of the day, we need to offer such an experience and what, I understand that there's a lot of parks and different things to do, but we wanna have something that's a bright shining light where we are at, all band together, in my opinion, that we can all invest and be like, no, be where we are, spend your money where we are, and I want people to spend money at my business, close to my business, and close to these other businesses behind me. And that's where I'm looking at it, and I, I know that not one person is gonna be able to go in and spend and, and, and create this endeavor by themselves, and if I can be part of it, I would like to be part of it. So that's, that's my two cents, and I, I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the resolution?
I'm Kaye Solberg, and after the last meeting that we had, and we discussed this, Denny and I sat down and met with Chris, and I guess I'd like to say, I'm not opposed to the park for say, as for the park in the uptown. I love the layout of it, the design, but I just don't think the property owner should have to be the ones to pay for this park. There were a couple of things, I guess, that were brought up at the last discussion, and if I have this wrong, then I would like you to clarify it for me. And one was that I was told that at the lake, there is a taxing district out there, and so the urban renewal paying for property in that sense is, is the same way. Well, since I own property at the lake, I went back and took a look at that, and yes, they have a taxing district that takes care of runoffs, helping to purify the lake or whatever, but my tax on that is six dollars and twenty-four cents a year, completely different than what we're being asked to pay for as a property owner in the urban renewal district. If we're talking about one point five million dollars to two million dollars for the cost of this property, based on some of the things that Chris shared with us, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be taken in or paid towards this park each year, we're looking at twelve to thirteen years to pay for the park. Am I incorrect on that?
This would collect less than forty thousand dollars from the urban renewal district per year?
Right, and then the city puts in some community foundation.
The park would have to be paid for immediately, probably fronted by all taxpayers in the community, and then the...
So you're not borrowing money to pay for the park?
Well, that's debatable, how that will be done. And we have had some other entities that are wanting to contribute toward this, so it would depend on what the total amount is after we've all is said and done.
And I guess there again, if the flip side was, we're gonna go out and we're going to raise some of the money to pay for the park, I'd even be willing to go help raise some of the money for the park. I just don't think that it should be an assessment against the property owners within the urban renewal district. But I do like so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the park? Please come forward.
Mike Lawrence, I own a building that Harry's is in. I, I see where these people are coming from. I'm a business owner, I understand that things are tight right now, we have a lot of things going on in our downtown, but those things haven't hit yet. And so the timing of this is a little bit hard to, to, to grasp, and that's why I was against it to begin with. But putting on the caveat that, you know, if, if it doesn't get contracted out by the end of next year, it's almost like an olive branch to say, hey, we're gonna give you the trust of this money. But I, I hope you guys see at the same time as, and I know we have great things, Jesse has some good things going on, the GOS is coming, I mean, there's a whole bunch of good things, but those things haven't hit yet. Us as business owners, we don't, we, we haven't seen that. I can, I can visualize it in the future, and that's why I support this park. I don't support it, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's anything more for me as a donation. I mean, that's the way I look at this tax as me. I'm donating it to the city for a park. And that's, that's the only way I can justifiably look at it. For me, you asking me just to pay for a park, I don't quite agree with that, because, you know, it is going to be for the entire community. But as a person downtown that believes in downtown and sees what's going on and the money that people are putting into downtown, I don't look at this as a tax, I look at as me giving a donation to the city to make something a little bit better for, for the community. Somebody said there's, well, there's all these bars down there. Well, if you put a bar next to a church, what's the net effect? I mean, you gotta look at that. If we just keep putting bars downtown and we don't put parks, it's never gonna get any better. So that, that's one thing that I, I thought is, is let's get some good things downtown, let's get a park downtown. One thing I did notice in your plan, which is just a small thing, is I wish there was some playground equipment for kids. We have a splash park, but if it's cold, I'd also wanna see something like that down there for the kids to come down and play on the playground, and slides or something like that. That would be really cool to, to have it in the, in the times where it's not splash parkable, or, or have in the open space. But like I said, I'm, as far as the tax, it's, it's, to me, I'm giving money and I'm willing to give this, and, and as long as this gets done into this plan, because I believe in downtown, and, and like I said, these people are all struggling, it's, it's, we're not there yet, and we're going there, and we're, we're on the path to there, but the timing of this is, we, it hasn't hit down there, so we're still struggling, and we don't see the economic impact that is going to be coming in the next years with, with all the, the people. We're asking people to move down there, we have no place for their kids to go. So that's, that's how I see it. I, I see, I had a great conversation with Mr. Landsberger, I understand where he's coming from, I understand where they're all coming from, because it is a struggle. But for right now, on this plan, I support the park, and I support what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Are there others opposed that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, Jeff Otto. I'd just like to start out by Watertown Uptown businesses already pay payroll taxes, property taxes, sales tax, and everybody that, and everybody that pays, but you must remember that we collect taxes for the city and the state. So I just don't think it's fair to, as my dad would say, bite the hand that feeds you, and in this case, we're getting bit twice on it, so that was one of the things I went over, but, and, and I, I don't really oppose the park, but I just think that the people, some of the people who enjoy it the most, like the apartments, buildings, are not paying tax on this urban renewal, and a lot, a lot of them people will probably enjoy that more. It seems like the people who aren't gonna use it end up paying for it, and, I guess a small amount you're gonna raise off this tax just isn't worth the burden for the business owners. And it's gonna benefit a small percent that are gonna pay for it, but everybody's gonna enjoy it supposedly, but anyway, that's about all I had, I guess.
All right, thank you. There's a couple minutes left, is there anyone else in favor of the resolution that would like to speak?
I'm Greg Blow, and I guess I'm wearing the Art Walk hat tonight, and would like to tell you a little bit about the spirit of the Art Walk and its idea for downtown. And that is, you know, we wanna make downtown attractive. And five or six years ago, a few of us got together and sort of hatched this idea, and we didn't live downtown, we didn't own buildings or businesses downtown, we loved downtown. And we said, let's, what, what can we do? And we certainly looked at Sioux Falls and what they had done, and thought that that was working out. We went out and recruited sponsors, some who have businesses downtown, some who don't, some, and I don't know if any of them live downtown. They aren't particularly artistic, although Sean Dempsey does a good job with his pizzas, and he's on our board, and, but, you know, it's, it's money from people who don't live downtown, don't work downtown, but want downtown to work, and to be attractive, for people to come and see what's down here. And it, for, the people that are gonna, the people that benefit from the attractiveness of downtown aren't the people in northeast part of the city, except when they can come down and use it. The people that benefit are the people that have businesses here or that live here. And that's the idea, it seems pretty obvious to me, and I, I'm, I'm really sort of stymied by the ideas that there's no benefit here, it's just a tax. It's not a tax, it's a tax with a purpose. And it's up to you guys to make sure the purpose is fulfilled, but, you know, there's a purpose, and there's something really good that can happen to our community if we do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing, the timer went off. Thank you all for being respectful. A couple of comments I would like to make about people shouldn't have to pay for a park in their neighborhood. The, the city ordinances require new developments when they go in to pay for a park, so they, they either have to donate the land for a park, or donate money to be used for a park in the future. So the central business district does not pay or does not do that. We, we exclude industrial and commercial zones from having to make the park dedication. But really... But really, people do live downtown and people do come downtown. There is a need for a park downtown. So this could be seen as a balance to make it more fair than those who have to do that in the residential areas. See what else here. So I guess that's all I have to add. Would any of the council members like to make some comments? Okay, Councilman Albertson?
I've been here for many, many years, and I probably have almost as much history as anybody for downtown and for Watertown. And I, for one, love the idea of a park downtown. The thing that I don't love is the fact that a few people are going to build this. And I agree with you that downtown people are going to enjoy it. But I also believe that I would enjoy it very much. Julie's talking about the things that can happen in Watertown with a park. I would sit here and tell you a lot of things are going to happen if we can get our hockey rinks built. And I don't wanna go off on that segue or anything. But to me, we're still missing the point on this that if Watertown really wants a park downtown, I think then we want a park downtown. You know, we just were told by the municipal utilities that we weren't going to get some money that we were hoping for. And now we're talking about two million dollars here that the city is going to pay for. And I'm just really nervous about, all of a sudden, the park surfacing when we've had other things that H2O2O suggested. And I think we were all ready to pay for that and still are maybe. But anyway, the downtown, I don't think should have to pay for this. I think the city of Watertown, those of us that live here, should pay for it. And I would love the idea of a park, trust me. I think we should all pay for it.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify that all of the city's funds are not short. The operating funds is the one that's short. And that money would not come out of, the money for the park would not come out of that fund. And the city property owners will be contributing to this park. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess something I just want to present, because I am one of the council members for the ward that is the downtown, Beth is as well, is that it's easy to get in an echo chamber, because, believe me, I have received phone calls from both sides. I 100%, much like Mike had said earlier too, I understand both perspectives thoroughly. So we have to represent both sides. When we spoke about this at the last meeting, I was the one that said, let's push this off a month and come up with a real plan, because we didn't have one in the past. And it felt like the funds weren't very focused, and it felt like there was a lot of ambiguity with this. Now, what we put forward at this point is just a middle ground to it. This is a means, we lowered the assessment. So it's easy, like I said, to get in an echo chamber where we're hearing opposition against it. But there are plenty of people that have businesses downtown, I'm a partner in one too, who support it. I don't own a building downtown, but I'm just saying, there is a benefit that folks can receive downtown too. It might not feel like it right now either. And when we talk about, like, who does this benefit? It benefits the whole city. Yeah, it does. But at the same time, you have to understand too, that someday, if you ever choose to sell that building, your properties increase because of that. If you tried to sell that off as a retail business, as housing, anything like that, you're gonna have a higher amount that you'll be able to sell it for. So, I mean, it does benefit on that end. But I do understand feeling targeted. Just understand that when this was put forward, in many ways, it's a compromise. I believe, what was it, fifty buildings that were in the petition against it and full opposition? How many buildings are there downtown?
Hundred and forty-six, I think.
So I don't, when we say like it's a slap in the face to all the owners downtown, we're trying to meet people in the middle here. So that's where this came from. This is where it pushed for. The hope and the vision with it is that if we create an event space in the downtown, we create a sense of community in the heart of our community. And we quit expanding so much outward, and maybe we start expanding inward and start putting some investment to the heart of our community. So that's just my two cents on it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manti?
Michael, you took all my best stuff. Okay. I just wanted to address a little bit about the idea of the forty-one parks. If you really truly look at that list, there, we're talking about bringing people downtown. And of those parks, none of them are actually located downtown. They all pull people away from the downtown. And also of those forty-one, there's really only three that are near the area that have any kind of services, and when services, I mean like a bathroom, playground equipment or whatever. And these are sometimes family draws, sometimes athletic draws, but they're not really the kind of thing that would bring the types of things that Julie's talking about. People aren't gonna come down and say, let's go to Diamond Ball Park, okay, for a fam, you know, for a conference party or whatever. But I think they would really enjoy being downtown. I have spent a lot of time in economic development as well. And as Mike said, that the more people, okay, the more foot traffic in any area, all the buildings and businesses, including those around the periphery, benefit. And what happens exactly right, your cost, excuse me, the value of your building goes up. Things that you can lease it for go up. And as far as the city putting this all on the downtown owners, whoops, thanks, Adam, putting it all on the downtown owners, I don't feel that that's the case. As we've said, this is about, what, two percent of what the total cost? I was trying to do the math real quick for the...
It would depend on how long we would do that.
Right, right. So there's other people putting into this. I'm putting into it by, you know, what the taxpayer stuff, I know there's other entities. So it's basically a collaboration, as I see it. A collaboration that's gonna put an investment into our downtown. And I understand what Mike made a really good point about, you know, the GOS hasn't opened yet. We have all these other things. But if I look at the amount somebody would pay for a year versus what the benefit would be, all you would have to do is have, with additional foot traffic, let me see what this one says, would be to sell on this particular one ten more products because of the foot traffic. Okay? And so it would be very easy to make up that two hundred and sixteen dollars with a lot more people downtown. So just to tell you that, that we are looking at this as a collaboration. I feel like the plan is everything you've asked us to do, that we're meeting you on a miller ground. We got a new plan. We reduced the rate. We have new investors to participate in this park. And as Greg's mentioned as well, that people have been donating and doing things downtown that don't live downtown for an awfully long time. Five, six, seven years, people or more. How old is the Art Walk, Greg? Six years, that's what I thought. So people have been putting money downtown for many, 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 many years. They don't live there, but again, they want the downtown to look nice. And I don't disagree. And as Mike said, there's just as many people who have told me that they are in favor of this. I got calls on both sides of it, understand both sides of it. But I truly believe that for the investment that you would be making, and I really believe it's an investment or a donation, whatever you have, looking at these, that number is going to be recouped multiple times in one year. The amount you're taxed in one or assessed in one year is gonna be made up multiple times when you start having more and more people living downtown, more and more people, foot traffic. I just see this as something that the whole city is participating in. And we're just asking you, who will increase your sales and some of those other things, to put some skin in the game as well. I have a couple other things, but I know there's other people who probably wanna talk, and so I will let them do that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodemski?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank everyone that spoke on this issue tonight in a very respectful manner. I'm all for the, I listened to both sides of it too, had a couple different calls, talked to a couple different people on it. And I'm all for progress of the downtown and downtown Watertown. But I don't want the downtown to be divided by a special tax. I think that everybody has a stake in this community. If we start taxing people with different taxes, it may come down to what area of town you live in as to what's gonna be done in that town. I just don't want this to set a precedent as for what this could lead to in the future. There could be some business people out there that are thinking about going into business. And if there's a special tax assessed to that, that might also deter them from going into business. I just think as a community, we need to come together as one, and we need to find a different way to pay for this than asking a certain group of people to pay for this when everybody's gonna enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lalum?
Thank you everyone for coming. Couple things I had, I was actually just in Rapid City this past weekend. I was out there for a conference on some business stuff. And I actually had our meeting at the Alex Johnson, which overlooks the downtown park in Rapid City. So, and I used to live out there fifteen years ago. So when I lived out there, their downtown was a blighted community, or area of the community as well. To go back to that fifteen years later, to see what it has changed to, it is the in-demand place for businesses to relocate to. Funny thing is, after that, we lived in Sioux Falls, which, as many of you know, anyone that's been down there twenty years ago was the real blighted area. Talking with owners down there, they have been through the same process. It is a long, slow-moving process. You know, not to put words into our development company's mouth. You can't tell me that the people that donated to their financial drive the past year, I believe it was, they don't live downtown, but they made a commitment as well to go to downtown and make sure that we are using funds to help the downtown become better. It is a slow process, as Mike did talk about. It is something that does take time. It is an idea that we want our downtown to be as great as our lake and as our other areas that we have been focusing on. There is a benefit to being downtown as well. It's the only place in the city where your snow gets removed. And it is done fairly quickly. I'm not gonna say real quickly, Rod, I'm sorry. But it's the only place where you push your snow out in the street and everyone takes it away. So there are benefits to that. It still has a relatively inexpensive rental rate. It still has a fairly good amount of people that traffic it every day. I mean, we made the commitment to go from one-way to two-way to get people to slow down in our downtown and stay there. So there are benefits that are coming down there, and it does take time. You know, the taxes is one of those. I had a building downtown. I didn't need a two-story building. That's the reason I'm not downtown. I pay taxes, I pay payroll taxes, you know, I pay property taxes, same as everyone else does. I have no problem, you know, doing that. It's part of ownership, it's part of building your business and being a building owner. The downtown, I've seen more traffic downtown than I have when I was down there a few years ago. I mean, there's more people down there on a nightly basis. So there is a benefit to that. And I understand this is a hardship, I truly do. No one wants to write a check. I don't include it. But at the same time, we have to make a commitment that our downtown is gonna be the place that we want it to go to. You know, we got people coming from out of town that are building a loft because they see the option to get more people down there. So the more people that are downtown, the more people spend money downtown. That's just how it works. It's just the law of averages. I mean, you put another two hundred people down there, they're gonna spend money one way or another. So I understand that there's, you know, facilities that sell alcohol. That's what it's been. I mean, I'm sure if you could find a cheaper spot to put a bar in and people will frequent it, they'll go there. So it's just how it works. You know, not gonna go full high horse, but, you know, I feel it's, if we don't have the park in place, it doesn't get built, it gets refunded back. So it's an option, it's not the end-all, be-all, it's not gonna write the check that clears the whole park. But there's so much momentum in our downtown that we are hoping to push forward. It's another step in the cog. It takes time. You know, I mean, Sioux Falls was a twenty-year to twenty-five-year deal. We're trying to do it frankly in five to ten. Rapid City, I lived out there for four years. It didn't change in the four years I lived out there. It was a rough area. And they have, I was down there, it's the first time I've been there in five years. It has changed immensely. They have an Art Walk as well. They made that, the President Sculpture Walk, but they are pushing. And they are, there's not a lot of buildings that are available for lease or for sale. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilman Hollein?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask a question and then make a comment?
Sure.
The question that I have is for the people that are on the committee. First off, great work, I think a lot has been done. I was just questioning, so two million dollars roughly to build it, was there any discussion about the ongoing costs to keep the park up, staffing and stuff like that?
Yes, there was some discussion. And relative to other recreational facilities, this is very, very low. It's, you know, not gonna have a staff member there the whole time. We'll have to maintain the facilities, but it's relatively small in size compared to some of our other large park areas. So it is, as far as parks go, not a big overhead operation and maintenance cost.
Thank you. Now a comment?
Sure.
Thanks, thanks for the latitude. I'm all for a park. I love the idea, it gets me excited, I want it. Regardless of how this vote goes tonight, I dedicate myself to helping the council make one happen, because I do think it will help downtown businesses. The research I've done points that it would be a good thing for all downtown businesses. The reason why I will oppose this tonight, however, is from the city's standpoint. We have a lot of ongoing obligations that we are currently wondering how we're going to fund going forward. And to basically institute this upfront tax on you, which would then obligate us to at least a two million dollars issue, that we have no idea of how we're going to pay for it, I guess we're asking you to put some money up front when we haven't dedicated the money ourselves. I'm not really sure if that's the way that I wanna do government yet. I think if those concerns were assuaged for me, then I could get behind it. I'm also concerned with ongoing costs, because I have a good friend in Rapid City who was telling me about some of what the Main Street Square does down there. Well, they have fourteen full-time employees running that Main Street Square. Now, even if we only have a fraction, and that's still a lot of ongoing costs that I'm concerned with. I'm not saying that we can't do it, but I'm saying until those questions are addressed, I can't vote to obligate you to pay a tax that we have no idea if it's actually going to come up with. Because we've had other things on the H2O2020 plan that people said were a great idea. We even put money aside to them, and they have not yet been finished. So I'm not really sure if I'm at that point yet. I love a downtown park, I wanna make it happen, but we have to figure out how the city is going to pay for its end of the bargain first.
Okay. I wanna just clarify that we do know where the money would come from. It would come from our Second Penny Sales Tax Fund, which is a healthy fund. And it pays for projects and new park facilities, that sort of thing. And we have set aside some money for park features for the future. So it isn't a total mystery. The dollar amount that would come out of the city coffers directly is a mystery, because we know we're going to have some sponsorships there. And there are opportunities for cutting those costs down. We don't know what they are. We haven't gone to bid with this. We, you know, we can remove things that we can't pay for, if, you know. So it isn't that big of a mystery. And it, you know, just wanna clarify that. Anyone else? Councilman Y?
I just wanna say, thank you guys for coming, and I've heard on both sides of this tonight. And I just look at what's going on in downtown Watertown. You look at the lofts, you look at what Mr. Landsberger has done over the years with the buildings and all of the renovations that he's done and the money he's stuck into downtown. And I see this park is just another piece of the puzzle of putting it together. And I know that, you know, some of your margins are slim. You know, the grocery store business, you gotta sell a lot of green beans to make a profit. And so I understand that it's very tight for business owners to make it, you know, to pay an extra tax. Myself, I was looking at purchasing a property here. I don't own a property in downtown Watertown, but I was in the works of doing that. And I figured this in there, that that was just a cost of the business and that I was excited about it. And there's so many things happening downtown Watertown that I think this just fits right in and makes that puzzle more complete. And I think we'll look back at this and say, wow, that was a, you know, we did that right, because all this stuff is coming together in the next few years here.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, we already closed the public hearing.
I was just gonna make a comment about the Rapid City situation.
I was just going to make a comment about the Rapid City situation, just to clear that up because I do know how that.
Okay.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Reed, just to clarify the Rapid City situation and the 14 employees. There's a third-party event organization that leases from the city, from Rapid City. And they're the ones that do the 200 events a year and they've got a lot of things going on. That could or could not be something, but I, I think that there's a complete other, it's like a management company at a mall. And so it's, that's a, a different step than I think what we're at. I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I want to say I've already looked into that. They have their own 501(c)(3) organization that goes out and raises a lot of money just to keep the park clean. So I understand that, but you're also, if you're comparing Rapid City to try to make Watertown work, you have to say Rapid City has a lot of other organizations that make that park work that we haven't even discussed yet. That's where I'm concerned.
True. Anything else, council members?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Villhauer?
This is, I, I, I'm in favor of this. I was one of those involved in drafting the revised plan as well as the resolution. I'm not going to repeat the same thing that everybody else has said. But I do want to make a point that, because I think it was Mr. Otto that raised the question. I realize it's part of the plan, which we already approved, but I am concerned about the fact that we are excluding certain parcels of commercial property, being the apartment buildings and vacant land. So I think that is something that we want to take a look at going forward, even though it's not part of the resolution now, but, but there, there is some inequity in the fact that we are excluding some properties that I feel will benefit from this as well. But, but in general, I am in favor of the comments that have been expressed by fellow council members that are in favor of this. The comment that I heard with the revised plan, time and time again, the last couple of weeks, has been investment. They're looking at this as an invest for the community, invest for the downtown. And that's why, one of the, one of the reasons that I look at supporting it as well as the other comments that were, that were expressed previously.
Thank you, Councilman Villhauer. Councilman Roby, I think you're the only one that hasn't weighed in, if you're still on the line.
I'll just weigh in briefly. I am in favor of this. I, I think there's been a lot of great discussion on both sides of this. But I think some of the comments that resonated with me most is, first of all, the momentum downtown, which really benefits everybody downtown. But also there's a lot of things going on, and I'll speak as one of the co-chairs of the Goss Capital Campaign. There's a lot of people that really want downtown to be successful and they don't own property downtown. What they're trying to do is make that a vibrant downtown that I think everybody's going to benefit, but those downtown landowners will benefit quite a bit too. And I hope they benefit greatly from all the things we're trying to do downtown. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you very much. Any other final words? Councilman Lalum?
I'd just like to point out that this, the drawing they have is a rendering. You know, I know I had got a couple of comments about a splash park and a couple of other items. I mean, that's one of those things that there's, hopefully whether it passes or doesn't pass, we can get a park down there and that we get community involvement from our downtown.
Absolutely.
Business owners and business users. I mean, let's be honest. I mean, we want people that are going to be coming down here that they, they tell us or whoever builds this what, what they want to see.
Right.
I mean, that's the only way that truly gets the momentum that it needs to is that people use it.
Right. And, and this was, the rendering was provided just to give people an idea of what's possible. And we can make it whatever we want. As a community, we decide if we're going to have one or not. And if we are going to have one, what's going to be in it. So any other final words? I think everybody's had a chance to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for action. We have a motion for enacting the assessment resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Rule call vote, please. Okay. Albertson?
No.
Poyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
No.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
No.
Roby?
Aye.
Villhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Okay. Six to three. Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you everyone for coming. We do appreciate this. This is democracy in action. All right. Item number 10 is the second reading of ordinance number 19-09, a zoning text amendment to Title 21 of the.
Don Roby.
Yeah. I'll give people a chance to shuffle out and then I'll reread that title. Okay. Item number 10 is the second reading of ordinance number 19-09, a zoning text amendment to Title 21 of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown, creating Chapter 21.56 DT Downtown Overlay District. I have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lalum. And I will ask Public Works Director Heath to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you recall, or maybe don't recall, it's been some time ago, but back in March of this year, the City Planning Commission tasked staff with exploring an aesthetics requirement in a downtown overlay district that would enforce and implement aesthetics requirements that relate specifically to upholding the historic integrity and the, and the aesthetics of the central business district. Since then, staff has worked and done a great job at doing some research. This was brought forth at one time and approved by the Planning Commission and subsequently sent back by council to the Planning Commission for further review and further considerations, particularly as it relates to the boundary and how we would establish this boundary that this district would apply to. We've since revised that boundary and looked at those considerations and came back through the Planning Commission, who again recommended approval at their September 5th meeting, I believe it was. And we are now at the point of a second reading and consideration for approval by the City Council for this zoning ordinance amendment. In a nutshell, again, what it would do is it would create a well-defined downtown overlay district that has specifics, specific language in this ordinance that relates to the building aesthetics and the historic integrity being preserved of those building aesthetics. Our urban planner, Brandy Hampton, is here this evening and she can help discuss any detailed questions with me that you may have.
All right, thank you. Brandy?
Thank you Heath and Mayor and Council. I really don't have anything else to add. Heath summed it up well, but I'll just be here if you guys have any additional questions and throughout the public hearing.
Okay, so how, what will the additional requirements be overlaid upon in the central business district that aren't there right now? Can you just summarize?
Yep. So there will be a higher aesthetic standard for the downtown district or the area that we've put within the boundary. So there, what, what's different from what's there existing in the C1 Community Commercial District is there, there's a maximum setback. There's aesthetic, for the building construction materials, there's requirements there on what is prohibited and then what is advi, or what's encouraged is the word we use. We also added a transparency requirement. And that's just more so, so that's going to be that the facade of the building would need to be 50% transparent between two and eight feet. And that's just to be inviting and so people can kind of window shop and, as they're browsing downtown. And then just really to create a walkable, a walkable downtown area where you can have mixed uses.
Okay, one thing that surprised me about the district when I first read through it was that we have a maximum setback. And in all of our other zones, we have a minimum setback. So in the downtown overlay district, we have a maximum setback. Can you talk about why?
Yep. So there is a maximum setback of 12 feet. And that is, so also will go by the adjacent properties and how those buildings are set on the property. And there will be an average on how far your building can be set back. And that's just to create consistency and then to also have that sense of enclosure. And just so everything's close and, and you're not getting that, I guess, it's just the sense of enclosure basically and how you feel when you're downtown to make it more walkable. And then also you can still do like a patio area if 40% of your building is, has a zero setback. I mean, it kind of gets into the weeds, but basically the max is 12 feet and that's just to keep everything close.
Right. Okay, so if you can visualize this, downtown has a zero setback requirement. So many of the buildings are built right up to the sidewalk downtown. And as you walk downtown, you are looking at windows and there's merchandise. There's people eating in there. It's kind of a uniform. And what we're trying to prevent is a parking lot right next to the sidewalk where the building is setback 30 feet. And within that 30 feet, cars are parked. So as you walk by, that's off-putting to be walking right next to a car. You can't really see what's going on in the store. It brings, it's more inviting to be uniform and adjacent to the walk, walking surface, which is actually in the right-of-way. The sidewalk is in the public right-of-way, so the building would be right next to it or within 12 feet of it. And then the materials, the differences in the materials that, can you give us an example?
So the encouraged materials that we went through with Plan Commission, what we agreed upon would be decorative masonry, granite, brick, glass or stone. And then the prohibited materials is metal unless it's used as an accent not to exceed 15% of any wall. And that's also consistent with our gateway overlay district and how we allow metal there. The use of lapper shingle siding, stucco or synthetic stuccos below 12 feet and plywood.
Okay, thank you. No plywood buildings. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing if, if you're done, Brandy, and ask if anyone is here to speak for or against this. Again, I, I will limit, it doesn't look like that will be necessary, but I'm going to go ahead and limit the public hearing to 20 minutes and ask for people in favor and against to go back and forth. So is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the overlay district? Please come forward. Is there anyone opposed to it that would like to speak? See no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, council, do you have questions and comments? Councilman Lalum?
Brandy, does this make this much more restrictive to attempt to build or remodel in the uptown, downtown area?
Not necessarily. So this ordinance also only applies to new construction or substantial improvement. So if somebody wants to do some remodeling, that might, you know, it might pose an issue with what they're wanting to do. But really they should look at it as an investment to their property to be cohesive for downtown and to really uphold the integrity.
These are strictly exterior improvements, correct?
If, if it were interior too, whatever the substantial improvement was, so whatever 50% of the, the building's assessed cost is.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying we're talking about what type of materials you can use. We're not telling them that they can't put drywall in or they can't do, you know, carpet or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. This is, you're right. It's exterior.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm more concerned about, yeah. So what, is there any repercussions that come from this overlay being done that we're not foreseeing? Is there, I mean, obviously we're trying to get their uniformity, be able to come through and, you know, if someone wants to tear down a building or there's, like we had the, the fire and, you know, we're putting a new building up, obviously we want it to, some sort of cohesiveness through that downtown. Is that what we're looking to do? There's, there's no other nefarious options that we're going against?
No. So this, this is looked at as being a positive thing and then just to create that, that feel for downtown and to have that cohesive historic integrity. But then also too, I mean, it's a workable document or ordinance where if there's something that just doesn't work when somebody comes to, to utilize it and then we bring that up and it's, you know, we, we question it, then it's, it's also like all ordinances, you know, it's able to be amended and changed over time too if something's not working with it.
Is there anything that a variance would not be considered for? That's discussed every now and then.
Right, not in this one.
Okay.
Major opposition at the meetings? Any, any, anything?
No, no. And I sent letters to all the downtown property owners. And I have heard some feedback, but it's just more for clarifying any of the details.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say I did receive a comment that metal siding is inexpensive and if we're not going to allow it, that will drive the price of, you know, siding up. Just one opinion.
And I think for that then, and we do still allow it in other districts. Just that we would be prohibiting it in the downtown just to have that same architectural style.
Right. Councilman Villhauer, did I hear you?
Yeah, I, I've got a question for, refresh my memory either Heath or Brandy. As I recall, when this came before us a couple of months ago, the, the only issue that we had at that time had to do with tweaking the boundaries a little bit. There was nothing else that the Planning Commission did in the way of revisions when they took another look at it. Was there?
No, no, but they agreed that to, basically the boundary revision that we did, we extended it to the north side of First Avenue Northwest as well.
Okay. But that, that was the only thing that the Planning Commission revised?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Lalum?
So what if they have an existing building that currently has that type of material on the outside? Are they going to be able to re, recreate that with what they, what they have? I mean, if they have the steel on there now, if that building was destroyed, is that one where they have to not be able to recreate?
If it were, if it were to burn down and it wouldn't be grandfathered back, so then they would have to adhere to this ordinance, this overlay district if they were to rebuild.
Or a substantial improvement?
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may add to the discussion, for council's consideration, we have a current application on our desk for a new building within this district that would not meet the overlay district requirements. I've contemplated with staff, I've talked to the, the building official and he has indicated in the past that the council has considered and implemented a moratorium, if you will, on issuance of permits when there's pending ordinance adoption such as this. I would just, you know, beg the question to get some direction from you and if, if you would like to include that in your motion through the appropriate language that Matt could help us with, whether or not we would want a moratorium to cease any permit issuance until this is formally adopted on November.
First.
November 1st is the effective date. Otherwise, we do have one current application on our desk that would not meet these requirements. And, you know, it's anybody's guess whether we would get any more between now and November 1st.
Thank you. Good point. That would require an amendment to the motion. And the motion was made by Hollein. And Lalum second. You would, willing to add the moratorium? And add them?
So they would not be able to issue the permit? They'd have to comply.
I would suggest yes. Either they would come into compliance and we could still review that permit application ahead of the November deadline. We're wait and reply at November 1st, but of course that's the effective date. So we would work with them to become, to come into compliance ahead of that November 1st deadline with the current application.
When, when was it submitted?
Last Thursday, but it wasn't complete, so.
So it was submitted after the public notice at the Plan Commission of a change of ordinance? So maybe trying to get in?
Yeah, well, and, and they weren't aware, I had talked to the, the owner and they weren't aware of it. And then I did send them the proposed ordinance and everything and encouraged them to wait and comply or to design it to comply, but it would not, what, what they submitted.
Do you have a complete application now?
No. No, we're waiting on a site plan.
Need a second one up? I'll second the amended.
Okay, so we have, have a. have a motion and second to amend the motion to add a moratorium. Any discussion about that? None? Oh, Michael.
I guess the question would just be if we're making this overlay district and we're having these standards, is there a reason we're doing that? I mean, I understand trying to get in before it, but if we're doing this, it's probably for a reason that we're trying to uphold a standard and establish a standard. And if it didn't meet the deadline and we're trying to uphold this standard, then I don't, I guess to me, I don't see why we wouldn't ask them to comply. Cause eventually anyway, the building would have to, if they choose to do anything to it, get into compliance. So either deal with it now or deal with it down the line when it's somebody else's problem, I guess.
I, I will just answer that by saying the city took quite a bit of criticism for building a metal building, which was completely legal. But it does not meet the, um, aesthetics of the rest of the downtown area when the city built the, um, Watertown Transit Building. And it stands today a metal building in our downtown. So that's the first thing, is the community came out just enraged. Many people were enraged that we would build a building like that. And it was allowable. We weren't giving ourselves any special treatment. We were just doing what was cheapest, I think. And that, I mean, we've, we've heard quite a bit of feedback. And so I guess that's a good example. It's been brewing for years.
And two, for that business owner, they would be building a structure that would be non-conforming right away. You know, they, with, when this comes into effect on November first, then their building would not be in conformance. So it would really be to their benefit to, to comply with this coming into effect.
Any other discussion about that? So, I'll look for action on amending the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Right, we're amending the motion. We're not voting on it yet. Did someone say nay?
I did.
You voted against the moratorium? Okay, so roll call, Bo. This was just to amend the motion to include a moratorium? Okay, probably need a roll call though. I'm confused. Here we go. Uh, Albertson?
Yes.
Hoyer? Holene? Lawland?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Yes.
Roby? He, I think he's, he dropped. Robbie's not here. Vilhauer?
Yes.
And why? Okay, motion carries. All right, I'm sorry about that. It was, um, we added a moratorium. And now is there any discussion about the motion itself? A minute.
Can I, uh, just to make sure that everybody's clear, were you, were you under the impression that the moratorium would allow the structure to go in? That was not, the, actually, the moratorium is to prohibit the construction of a building downtown that doesn't meet the overlay requirements prior to the effective date of the ordinance.
Okay, well now you'd swayed my vote.
Quite convincing. Wow. That was something. Okay. Any further discussion about the amended motion? Councilwoman Lawland?
You know, just talking about this, I, I, I completely understand the, the steel building on the transit building. I, I personally don't like that either. I think it's, we should set ourselves to a higher standard than, than what we ask the other people to, especially as the governing body. So I, I'm completely in favor of us doing something that adds some continuity to the downtown that's done correctly.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven is approval of resolution number nineteen dash forty-three, authorizing an application for financial assistance, authorizing the execution and submittal of the application and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests for the wastewater administration building. And I have a motion by Lawland and a second by Rademski. And if this looks really familiar to an action you took at the last meeting, it's because it is. Heath, you wanna explain what happened?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is just a formality, uh, as a mayor indicated. This is the similar resolution to what was passed at the second meeting in September that, uh, authorizes our application for funding assistance, uh, to the state for a new admin building at the wastewater treatment facility. What we did not include on that original resolution that was previously approved was the actual dollar amount. The five million dollars needs to be on the resolution. That was advertised in the appropriate notices of the, uh, resolution and the intent, uh, for applying for these funds, but it was not on the resolution itself previously. That's since been added, uh, just clerical error on staff's part here that we're correcting and as a formality.
Right, any questions or comments? See none? I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item twelve is approval of resolution number nineteen dash forty-four, expressing intent to enter into twenty-five year ground lease agreement, renewable for ten additional years with Jeremy Price and Joni Beekler Price for property located at the Watertown Regional Airport. Have a motion by Holene, a second by Lawland. And I will ask Heath to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the airport manager, Todd Siree, has been working with city attorney Matt here on putting together this resolution. This is similar to a few that we've seen in the recent past for, uh, following the requirements where we have to provide a notice of intent to enter into a lease agreement for this, uh, airport property for the uses of a, purposes of a hangar. And, um, generally speaking, that's, that's the summary where we're at right now. The subsequent agreement would be coming forth to the council for approval as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Lawland?
Same question we always ask, is this the same dollar amount as what we've done in the past?
Yes, sixteen cents a square foot is the, the rate currently.
Okay.
And that, it'll go up over time.
With increases built in, correct?
Correct.
Is, and my question even though Todd isn't here, is there any other additional area to be building additional hangars? I mean, we've had, I think this, the sixth or seventh one come forward in the last year?
That's a good question, Councilwoman Lawland, that I could definitely follow up on. I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I've kind of been wondering the same thing as he's kept forward.
They just keep coming up and I don't, I don't see a lot of space out there, so.
I think we're pretty well done and, uh, we, we do have other areas possibly in the future, depending on the layout of our new terminal, that could be utilized for, but we aren't to the point of, you know, you have to build, um, alleyways or, yeah. Councilman Holene?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, at the last airport board meeting, we did talk about this and we have one space available. One. It's a good problem to have though. We're growing. Uh, people want to be out there, so it's a good problem. Uh, we're already starting to address it.
Right. Great. Okay.
Reed, it, on a sixty by sixty, and maybe you know this, maybe you don't, can you fit two planes in there? One plane? I mean, I don't, I have no idea what. You got your own plane in there?
That I really don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I wish I did, but sixty by sixty, I would think if, depending upon the size, obviously, but I think that you could get, get more than one in there.
Okay. I just, it's just, I've just seen a lot of these come through and I'm just wondering where we're at as a board. I mean, we've talked about a new terminal. And if the terminal is built, then we would have additional space that comes up. But until that's done, are we landlocked into these? So that last one might be top priority, might be able to, maybe we get seventeen cents a square foot.
All right, any other questions or comments? Look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item thirteen is approval of enterprise funds budget twenty twenty appropriations. Have a motion by Albertson and a second by Holene. Kristin, will you tell us about this?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, as we recall, during September, we went ahead and approved the twenty twenty budget for the rest of the funds, the governmental and the special revenue. This is to actually, um, put the enterprise funds on the books for twenty twenty. Everything that we discussed during the public hearings is in this, um, appropriation. So all I need is council approval and this will set the budget for twenty twenty.
All right, any questions or comments, council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Vilhauer?
Ju- just an observation, I, I know it's not our, we, we don't control that budget, but this does not include the, uh, the enterprise funds, uh, that comprise the utility operations.
Correct. So they have their own board that oversees the utility department's budget.
But those are enterprise funds of the city.
True, yes. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fourteen is approval of twenty twenty open enrollment agreements for employees and authorization for the finance officer or human resources director to sign all necessary documents. And before I get a motion on this, there are five different individual, um, items, or we can take them all. All at once. And why don't I let Kristin tell you about them first? Then we'll get a motion.
So as the mayor said, we can take these all separate or we can take it all as one motion. Um, it is part of an open enrollment packet. So what I can do is I can go through and I can go over each one and then make a motion to accept them all. The majority don't actually have a change. So it's really the health insurance is what we're kind of discussing, so. Are we okay with just one motion as I go through them?
Would your recommendation be to be one motion?
Yes.
Then I would make that motion that we through all five.
Okay.
We have a motion by Lawland and a second by Rademski. So do you wanna tell us about the individual?
So we'll go through them. Um, the first one on the agenda is for the group health insurance. According to our union contracts, part of the process when we get our health insurance renewal and any type of insurance, there, where there's the city contribution with it, um, we set up an insurance committee that's made up of the three unions. And then we have three members of management and the mayor. And those are the voting members of the insurance committee. So whenever we have a change, um, the committee takes a vote and that's what is, comes before the council. The committee decided that this year, because the premium was really the only significant change, if you remember last year, we went from a two-tier, um, plan to now a four-tier plan. So when I presented it to the committee with the renewal, um, we decided to just take a vote without having to really meet too much on it. The Wellmark Insurance Renewal came in at a five percent increase, which is pretty good for health insurance. Um, I'm very happy with that increase. It ends up being, and this is an estimate because we don't know what the employees will shift to, whether they go single family, uh, anything like that. But it's looking like around a ten thousand a month increase. So all in all, very happy, very favorable. I think everybody was, was happy with that. When we switch to the next one on the agenda, it is the Delta Dental Renewal. There is no change to the premium. That is a complete employee contribution. The, um, the city does not contribute anything towards Delta Dental. The next one is MetLife Renewal. MetLife again came in, no changes to the rates. So that will be the same as it was in twenty nineteen. Uh, let's see, the next one is WageWorks. And WageWorks too had no changes to the renewal packet, completely the same as it is in twenty nineteen. And then the very last one is the BSP, which is the Vision. That is a employee contribution. There is no city contribution to that one. We had a slight increase. It looks like it's around a nine to ten percent. But in terms of dollars, um, if we, I'll just throw a few numbers out there for you. If you looked at the standard plan, the single plan went up seventy-four cents a month and the premium on a single went up a dollar seventeen. So in total, I would not say a significant increase. So I can answer any questions, but if not, this will be all the items that'll be part of the employees twenty twenty renewal packet.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Ma- Mayor, Kristin? Um, we have, I, I think I know the answer, but, uh, verify it. We have had such good luck with the Public Assurance Alliance for other insurance needs. They do not offer any kind of benefits such as these or insurance such as this through their offerings, do they?
No, no, not that I'm aware of, so.
Okay, okay. I didn't think so. I just wanted to ask a question in case there was something that, that we might be overlooking. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, see none? I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fifteen is authorization for the human resources director to sign an agreement with Discovery Benefits for Cobra Administration effective January twenty twenty. Motion by Albertson?
Second.
Second by Rademski. And Jelaine, Jelaine's ready to talk, so you wanna tell us about this, HR director?
So council, thank you for taking the time to discuss with me the Discovery Benefits. Just to do a quick overview, um, Discovery Benefits will offer Cobra services to our employees for the rate of one thousand thirty-five dollars per year, which equivalents to about seventy-five cents per employee. All of their benefits include, uh, new hire Cobra paperwork. The next business day, uh, an employee is hired. Qualifying event Cobra paperwork the ne- next business day, so whatever qualifying event happens, they will receive that paperwork. They will collect payment and reach out to different carriers for us. They will also readmit any payments needed. They'll help with open enrollment. They'll have a, and provide a technology platform for us. They'll have access to a mobile app, so all employees will have access to that. We are guaranteed legal compliance to make sure that we are compliant with any legal issues that come up. And then they do assume full liability for any issues. This service will help myself, HR as a whole, not only in time commitments, but also in making sure the city of Watertown is as compliant as we can be. Is there any questions?
That seemed really cheap.
It is. It's very cheap. I asked a ton of questions because I was just, I seriously was concerned that this is so cheap and they're offering all this. It's guaranteed.
Great, awesome. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item sixteen is approval of a sponsorship agreement with Relia Bank for the twenty twenty Fourth of July celebration. Have a motion by Lawland. Um, second by Vilhauer. And I'll ask Matt to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we put on a, quite the Fourth of July celebration every year out at the Redland Art Center. And, uh, this past, uh, the past few months, Relia Bank has approached the city and, uh, asked that they, um, basically, uh, ask us to partner with them in the, for the twenty twenty Fourth of July event. The terms of which would require them to, um, uh, basically pay us twenty-five thousand dollars to be the, the title sponsor of the event. That would preclude us from going out and seeking additional sponsors like we have in the past. You know, this has been a little bit of a process that there's a few different hands in the, um, in the pot here for this event with the CVB, the Chamber, the city, the Redland Art Center. But, um, anyway, this agreement basically would solidify that relationship. It would require us to basically put on the same events that we have in the past as far as the security, police, fire, uh, arrangement. And, uh, this would also, uh, put the burden on them to come up with the musical entertainment. And I'll let them make the announcement as to what that's going to be. I don't know if that's solidified yet, but, uh, they're gonna be, uh, making the arrangements for the, uh, the musical entertainment next year, so. Any, uh, questions? I'd be happy to answer them, or Julie's here as well, she could chime in.
Councilman Lawland?
Matt, um, I know there's been some talk about, you know, some of the building that's going up around there. Is that gonna be an issue as far as being able to put on the, the fireworks display out there with the construction being about wrapped up by that time?
We don't think so, and, uh, sorry, Matt, I mean to jump in. We have talked about that.
Answer's gonna be, I don't know, so.
Tarex is, um, on the committee.
Okay.
So they're well aware of the plans and they, you know, we've had the fire truck out there just poised and ready to go and we got spotters, so if any- out there just poised and ready to go, and we've got spotters. So if anything did happen, it'd be, I'll put right down immediately.
Okay. I know that was one of the concerns going forward, especially if we have a dry year. It's, you just don't know.
Right.
Sounds like we're not going to have a dry year, though.
I was going to say, I would hope we didn't have a dry year, but I don't think.
Councilman Wy.
Just to be clear, I think I read this correctly. So they're the sole sponsor, like you said. But if somebody wanted to come in and sponsor the fireworks, they would still have that ability? Because that's different than this exactly?
Right. I mean, the contract does allow for additional sponsors. They would have to be approved by Relia. It gives Relia Bank the approving authority, approving ability with their contribution. So obviously, they're probably not going to say yes to another financial institution, but if a different entity came forward to sponsor some aspect of it, they could, they could allow that per the contract.
And July third falls on a Friday next year, Fourth of July on a Saturday. So this will be a big thing for Watertown. Huge.
Finally, on a Friday night. Yes.
If I understand it, first of all, I want to commend and thank Relia Bank for stepping up and offering this. But I do have a question, though. The twenty-five thousand essentially is in lieu of going out and soliciting contributions. Yes, Relia Bank may allow others to participate, but I've got a feeling nobody else is probably going to step forward. Is this twenty-five thousand commensurate or comparable to what we typically do raise for that event?
Yes, it is. And as much as I hate not being able to go out and ask for money, I do see some really good reasons for doing this. And I, I mean, it's a big deal for Relia Bank, their hundredth anniversary, and they want to make a big splash. And so I appreciate their doing this, actually, very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item seventeen is old business. Do we have any old business? Councilwoman Manti?
I just want to pick up on a couple things that were mentioned during the course of the hearings and discussion on the downtown assessment. Just to clarify, any changes to the, excuse me, any changes to what's included within that assessment role, such as adding the apartments, and also reevaluating the boundaries, would have to be done by discussing it during, you know, the next period of time. We've missed the window to do that right now for this year. So prior to next year, that would have to be evaluated, and then it would take, would it be a resolution or an ordinance, Matt, to change the, change the boundary or to add another business entity to the assessment role?
We would just have, have to amend that plan again in the same fashion that we did this year.
Okay. So I just want people to understand that that's not something that we can just do. We have to have a process for that. And then that would have to be approved by the council, correct?
Yeah. And the urban renewal boundaries, I'd have to go back and look and see exactly how that was determined, if it was by ordinance or resolution. But I, whichever one of those it was accomplished by would be the same mechanism we would use to alter it.
Okay. Thanks, Matt, for clarifying that. So that I wanted to point out, since it had been brought up. And then the next thing was, snow removal was also brought up. And it is my understanding that the way we conduct snow removal downtown has nothing to do with the assessment that we receive from the, yeah, that's just something that's done.
It's not tied to the assessment.
Yeah, it's not tied to the assessment in any way. So if we made any changes to the snow removal process, if Rob, you want to run up here and punch me, you can. Anyway, if we make any changes to the snow removal project, process, again, that would be a change to the downtown snow removal. And we would have to do that same thing, right? We'd have to look at working with the street department and snow removal and change the policies or the ordinance, how would that? Matt's just, he's all, you know, looking at me like, oh, Beth.
I was getting asked a question over here, so I apologize if I didn't hear the whole question. But if it's regarding the snow removal downtown, my understanding is that that's become a pattern in practice, and it's not written down anymore, anywhere that I know of. But I could be wrong on that.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then in order for us to reevaluate how that takes place and who's included in that, that would have to be something that would be discussed. And perhaps it would be good to formalize that in some way, so that we don't sit and go, hmm.
Awesome.
Yeah, exactly. So those were just a couple things I wanted to clarify under old business while we were still here, fresh with the discussion. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I have had some comments about why are apartments exempted from the urban renewal assessment role. So that can be revisited, but not for this time. Any other old business?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, in the spirit of Councilwoman Roby's absence, carry on his commitment to his constituents.
Do you want me to ask?
Certainly.
Heath, can you give us an update on Cherry Drive?
Absolutely, Councilwoman Lalum. I'd love to. I do have some new information, so I did want to interject there and provide that this evening. In discussion with Corps of Engineers and the wetland delineation that occurred, that exists up in that area, because it is a linear wetland, it is possible that they could permit it to be realigned, which is good news for us. So we've proceeded moving forward. Again, we've been walking hand in hand with the developers engineer, the developer to the north, that kind of sparked this whole discussion on getting this channel realigned and corrected as far as getting positive drainage, positive flow, removing some of the standing water. But we're working hand in hand with that developers consultant engineer, and we will be producing some grading plans to submit to the Corps of Engineers for their review, for their permit, for us to regrade that, realign that, that channel appropriately. That process will likely take long enough that this will get pushed back into the next construction season. That's the one downside here. It does not appear that we'll have time to get this done yet, this construction season through this fall. So I just wanted to give the council some information on that. We will continue to look at that timeline and see if anything is possible through the fall, even in the early winter months. Of course, some of that will have to do with the water conditions that are existing out there and not wanting to fight them and make a bigger mess than we would on improving things. So.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lalum?
As a follow-up on that one, in the spirit of Mr. Roby being gone, is that something that maybe it would be better to do over the winter months when there, you know, there's water that is frozen in there, and we can, we can move through some of that without having to worry about the moisture levels in the, and, and another question for that, have we got any kind of financial, what is going to cost this type of deal? And what's the financial burden that goes to the city on that?
Yeah. On the first part of that question, and that's why I alluded to looking at and continually exploring what we could do into the early winter months. You know, if, if the conditions were right, that would allow for some grading out there, I think that we would pursue, potentially pursue that. Of course, it will depend on the time it takes to review this permit, and then by the time we take to get one in hand. But that is a possibility. And even through, into the later winter months, of course, frost depths and things like that, sometimes, depending on the grading project, it can commence and move forward, but other times, it's just not very conducive to making the grades that you want, and you're dealing with frost conditions and things of that nature. Since this isn't an area that's getting built upon with a structure, that's less of a concern. But it is just the fact of fighting frozen soils and the nature that entails. To the second part of your question, the cost, we do have funds budgeted this year that I would anticipate rolling over, and I forget if they're a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand off the top of my head. But that's something we would work with, too, on driving a cost estimate for these services before we bid it out. And we're actually, to take a step further, we're looking at potentially doing this collaboratively with the developer to the north contractor. We would have to work those terms out and modify the development agreement with the developer to the north. But we would realize a lot of economy of scale by doing this in partnership with them. That's something that we, the city engineering staff and their consultant have realized. As you recall, from that development to the north, they would like to do some off-site grading onto the city property. Some of this material for realigning this channel would be of value to them. So it's kind of a common ground effort to make this happen, and I think we might be able to, be able to do that at a very little expense to the city. But as we work through those details, I'll continue to bring some potential agreement language forward to you for those considerations.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other, are we on old still? We're on new. Councilman Albertson?
Okay. The ice skating rink, it's getting close to skating season, and now I'm getting more and more people asking me, what's happening? What are we doing here? So I just keep saying I will keep bringing it up. And so I never, I didn't have an answer, so I will pass it on.
They asked me about that at Capers, too. Yeah, and I'll give you the same answer, because there's, there has been a great deal of discussion going on about what to do. And the council is not ready to make a decision. We're still actively evaluating the alternatives and trying to figure out where to go with this. So, nothing to report. Councilman Rademski, do you have something?
It's more of a public service announcement. I got a call from one of the guys that drives the truck that picks up the receptacles that are set out to the curb. He's requesting that there is a four-foot space left between each one of those when you set them out to your curb. That way, they can pick them up a lot easier and set them back in place without damage to the other cans.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess it's just kind of a quick question, because I got asked about it throughout all the things that were going on in the downtown. But with, like, our paved alleyways, when they do get potholed out and they're kind of ripped up, what's the process for requesting that those get maintenance or be considered for maintenance?
Well, that's, they can make the request, and the street department can add it to the list.
Is it the same as the pothole, like, with your pothole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's a pothole, you know, some of those alleys were put in with a pretty thin layer of asphalt and, you know.
Right.
It's not the highest priority for the tax dollars to go to repair alleys when we have streets in desperate need. So they would have to fight for priorities. Yes, Councilwoman Manti?
I did hear a comment that at least the potholes in the alley keep people from speeding through them.
Yes, that is true. Speed holes. Any other new business?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, just for the sake of the press being here, I believe they were all out of the room at the end of the Public Works Committee meeting, but we did have a good discussion on sump pump discharges that Superintendent Berger and myself discussed. And just wanted to stress to the public that it is not allowed to discharge your sumps to the sanitary sewer. However, we do offer a variance process and issue an inspection and a permit to go to the sanitary sewer effective October fifteenth. So that date is coming up fast, and we'll be sending out a formal PSA on that as well. But I just thought I'd share that once more at the end of this meeting.
Thank you, Heath. Councilman Lalum?
Heath, I just had a question on that. Is that a yearly deal on that? They have to do it yearly, or is it one time?
It is a renewable every year. The inspection and the permit, the variance, is issued annually.
Any cost to that?
There is no cost to it.
So really, it's something that they should take advantage of, and it helps sanitation department know where it is so that they don't have to send you the nasty letter.
Yes, absolutely. And just to follow up on that, there is a link that will be added to the city's website approximately on Wednesday, ahead of this, that you can go to and fill out the proper information to receive one of those variances. And otherwise, you're also encouraged to call the wastewater department directly at eight-eight-two-six-two-four-four, and they will review and inspect those accordingly.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Hoyer?
Just quick clarification, one more on it. So it's illegal with a fine if you don't comply?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Hoyer. There is a language in our ordinance that has a pretty hefty penalty of up to a thousand dollars per day in violation of that section of the city code.
All right. Any other new business? Any liaison reports?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Villhauer?
I've got a couple of things to report. One, you, as well as several council members, were at the utility board meeting last week. It's been extensively covered in the media, but their decision was to give us a two percent increase plus a one-time contribution of a hundred thousand dollars for 2020 as part of their transfer. That is appreciated, obviously, but does leave us about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars short from what we have included in our, as revenues in our budget for 2020. So that will need to be, be addressed in our end. Do you have any further? I've got one other item. Do you have any other further questions on that, or comments on that, Mayor?
I will say that I know that the insurance came in less this year, so that will help. That's coming out of the general fund. And the finance office and, well, Kristin, is going to be doing the math and seeing what kind of a dent that makes in our deficit. So then we'll be rolling up our sleeves.
Okay. The other item is, I'm not the liaison, but I was, was at the last park and rec board meeting, and there's been quite a bit of media attention expressed concerning the possible loss of our accreditation for our zoo. At that meeting, I made the recommendation that the park and rec board communicate with, and applicable staff communicate with the finance office as far as getting together to try to work out, you know, what our options plans might be. And I, I'm, you know, I'm out of town. I believe there was a meeting possibly scheduled for as early as tomorrow. Does anybody have an update for sure on that, Kristin or Mayor or?
Yes, I, I did see one was scheduled immediately, and I had a conflict, but I don't, so I don't remember when it was. But if it hasn't happened already, it will be soon.
Okay. But anyway, that, that has been a, in a concern that has gotten quite a bit of attention as of late, which it should, concerning the possible loss of our accreditation of our zoo as early as roughly a year from now, if we don't address a couple items.
Right. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other liaison reports? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. We do need to go into executive session tonight pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters and economic development issues. And we do not expect to take any action when we come out. So I'll look for a motion to go into executive session. We have a motion by Manti and a second by Holene. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We are in executive session.